At this time, I'll call the February 20th, 2023 County Council Meeting to Order. If you'll stand with me, our representative from District Four is unable to be here tonight, but I'll lead us in our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Goodbye, your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon our county. We ask for you to specifically grant your protection over those who wear uniform, whether it's local, state, or national, that you would watch over them and their families. And I'll lead us in the prayer that you taught us to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive those who sin against us. Lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome you all here tonight. Wow, that was nice to actually hear everybody praying together. And I usually do my Presbyterian debts or debtors, but I decided to use my sins or sin against us. We do appreciate all of our public folks for being out here tonight. You know, I think people don't realize how powerful your voice is and how very critically important it is for us to hear from you and for you to show up to these meetings. So I do want to say thank you for being here tonight. With our agenda, we will move straight ahead into Oath of Office for newly appointed Board and Commission members. If I call your name, if you'll come forward so that you can be sworn in to serve on the Board or Commission that you've been selected to serve on. Cynthia Jackson, Bethel Lake Wiley Lake Acquisition and Preservation Park District Board. Corey Cronin, Bethel Fire Tax District Board. Ann Scar, Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Mike Gettings. And Celeste Tiller for the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board. Stephen Ballinger, Keep York County Beautiful, District Three. Laura Sturgis and Kurt Robinson, Keep York County Beautiful at Large positions. We also have Emily Wright Huggins for Keep York County Beautiful at Large, and Patty Myers, the Board of Disabilities and Special Needs for Max Abilities. We want to say thank you so much for your willingness to serve and to do so on a volunteer basis. And most of the time, you don't get thanked for what you do, but our council wants to say thank you very much for your willingness to serve and for you to use your time to serve our community. And if you'll follow in the, our lawyer, who will come in and swear you into office.
(inaudible)
We do not have any appearances tonight, so we'll move straight to our public forum session. This is an opportunity for us as council to listen to our community and to hear what you have to say. Unfortunately, folks sometimes come and ask a question, and council always gets frustrated when we can't answer you, but that's because we have an agenda that we need to get through. But this provides an opportunity for our community to have that time to speak to us before we get into the business of county. When I call your name, if you'll come forward, please give your address. And if you'll please, make sure that you pay attention to the screen, because when the two minutes is up, it'll start blinking, you'll see red. And if you don't see it before I do, then I have to cut you off, and I absolutely hate doing that. But that's my job. So we'll start with William Ratchford.
William Ratchford, 937 Stallion Spirit Trail, case number six, the Cherokee Farms rezoning, 22-48, second hearing. Last Thursday, I met with the, oh, by the way, I am the owner. We met with members of Cherokee Farms, and we put, set forth conditions. And after talking to the planning department, I will put those conditions into a, into deed restrictions, that if they got approved tonight, we may push back the third reading, but we'll push the, we'll have the, we'll have the deed restrictions in and recorded before y'all vote on the third meeting to be able, so the, to appease the residents, and everybody came together. And I think, I think George is going to speak next from the other side.
Thank you, sir. Richard G.
Hey, Richard G., 136 Main Street in Pineville. We're on the agenda tonight for McAfee Court. I'd like to respectfully request deferment until next reading in two weeks from now. I just, I'd like the opportunity to incorporate some recent feedback I've gotten, and I think y'all will be really happy to see it as well. I do have some very important renderings to scale of the project coming up that are going to really show exactly what that entrance would look like, as well as the road improvements. So I want y'all to be able to see that as well before we do vote on this. I have some additional meetings with neighbors this week that I've reached out to, so I want to get those under the belt as well before we move forward. And if possible, I'd love the opportunity to have maybe like a special presentation where I can show some visuals at the next meeting. It's tough to obviously say it all in two minutes, but I really want to show y'all what I've been working on. So I understand it's y'all's decision, though, and not mine, so I just respectfully request deferment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris DeShaysen, I'm sorry.
DeShayser.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak. Chris DeShayser, I'm at 1037 Wiley Springs Circle in Clover. I'm representing Clayton Homes. I'm the general manager out of Rock Hill, and I just saw that McAfee was going to be speaking with y'all, and I just wanted to let y'all know that we have a huge demand for land and home packages in the York County area. And something like he's trying to put together, I think, would be very, very useful for our area. We are getting a lot of people. Obviously, everybody here knows they're moving into the area. A lot of the times, we're losing them to Lancaster County, Union County. They are leaving our county because it's so difficult to get land in our area. So I would just hope if anybody ever needs anything, I want to send an olive branch. I would love to have you all at our home center, so we can view the homes and show y'all what the manufactured homes look like today. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to help y'all any way I can. We got national, as well as local contacts that could help us, so I appreciate it, and I just hope y'all consider it as we go forward.
Thanks, sir. I had been corrected three times that it is McAfee. I'm trying to get it right, because I'm from Lancaster, not Lancaster, so we'll keep moving. Thomas Merritt.
My name is Thomas Merritt. I live at 219 Horizon Circle in Rock Hill. I am a Rock Hill native, so I've been here all of my life, and I have a vested interest in York County and Rock Hill. I too work for Clayton Homes, so I'm here tonight to support the McAfee project. I work as a, I came to Clayton Homes four and a half years ago as a project manager, so I oversaw the construction projects. Today, now I'm in sales. So I see and hear a lot of the dire need for affordable starter homes. We did have a lot of families coming down from Charlotte. They're looking for land home package deals like Chris reiterated. And with site builders being so expensive today, a lot of people are coming to us for that affordable starter option. So also, too, I don't think I have to tell you, there's been a huge increase in real estate pricing, so it's been making a lot of our families get out of their budget. So anyway, I think projects such as McAfee would be just a really good option for a lot of our homes. I do foresee affordable housing being the way for the future. So I would just appreciate you seriously considering this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kristy Taylor.
Hi, I am Kristy Taylor, 975 McAfee Court, and I'm a resident there, as you guys know. Met with a lot of you guys out there at our property, and you've seen it, and you've heard from some people. You know, once again, we're coming up on the second reading, and we just really need to see this pushed forward for us to be able to get into new and affordable housing, starter homes, for those of us who are first-time buyers. And this is an opportunity, and I've talked to lenders and everything else, and for two-person income and also on fixed income, it's feasible. This is not just a pipe dream that we're looking at. So I really am imploring you guys as council to really dig in and take a look at what this is availability for a lot of working families that can be able to move into our communities and help us with the economics and getting, getting his eyesore taken care of, and this is what he's trying to do. And, you know, he's not trying to do it as a money, a money grab, making up money and that. Right now, he's actually solving a lot of problems and issues that are out there at this point and making it better, so please.
Thank you, ma'am. George Becker.
Hi, George Becker, 888 Stallion Spirit Trail. This is a summary of the zoning change request for what's going on with 2248. At the request of York County Council, the majority members of the Cherokee Farms Home Owners Association at this meeting in the neighborhood came to an agreement on specific conditions and restrictions that we negotiated with Mr. Ratchford. Mr. Ratchford is proposing to change the existing zoning of the property to RUD, to allow for animal and livestock keeping and raising. And Mr. Ratchford is proposing to record with York County Records permanent deed restrictions for this property. These deed restrictions include all the conditions that we, the Cherokee Farms Home Owners Association, agreed to. And this is an understanding of how this was going to go forward. At tonight's meeting, at the second reading, Mr. Ratchford informed the York County Council, County Council, he will draft and record the York County Court and Records permanent deed restrictions for the property at 937 Stallion Spirit Trail. And the permanent deed restrictions include all the conditions that we, the Cherokee Farms Home Owners Association, agreed to. It will also, after the permanent deed restrictions are written, Mr. Ratchford will send a copy to me and John Wright, who are the representatives for distribution to our members. Mr. Ratchford will have the permanent deed restrictions recorded before the third reading of the zoning request to facilitate ample time for our members to vote on that. And if a successful majority decision is achieved, which I'm pretty confident there will be, then Mr. Ratchford will ask the York County Council to proceed with the third reading of the case 2248 for the zoning change request. We just wanted to clearly define what was going on and what the process is going forward. And I have a copy of the summary here that I'd like to get to the clerk to be able to have.
Thank you if you'll just hand it to Karen. Thank you. Vincent Malo.
The name is Vincent Maloko, 975 McAfee Court. I think that it would be a good idea to allow the deferment, so that way, Mr. G. can put together a proper presentation, so that you guys can all see what is going to be available for the property over on McAfee Court compared to what it looks like now, and the potential upside that will be available for a lot of families that are interested in moving into the neighborhood and moving into the area, and they want something that they can afford. You know, they want something that's reasonable within the, you know, the mid-range wage for the working class. And it's a great opportunity for a lot of people that want to move out and live on their own. I have a lot of coworkers and friends and other people that are looking to, you know, they're still living at home, they're in their twenties, they want to move out. They found a two-bedroom apartment for $1,600 a month. And that's, that's ridiculous for a two-bedroom apartment. When I was doing some of the numbers for the modular home, manufactured home, our monthly mortgage would be roughly between $1,100 and $1,200 a month, and we would be buying our own home. And I certainly think that that is a much better option than renting for $1,600 a month on a two-bedroom apartment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joel Wood.
I'm Joel, I'm Joel Wood with Joel Wood and Associates. I'm a managing partner. We were at, in a little bit of history, in nineteen, early 1970, late 1960, I was a young engineer in training with Williams Engineering. Edgar Williams and I designed the initial wastewater treatment plant for the lagoon, for the McAfee Trailer Park. It met all the discharge limits at that time that were set by the state. Over the last 50 years, the treatment process has not changed that much, but the discharge limits have changed. With that came the need to make modifications. The lagoon system was gone from a single lagoon without aeration to a two-stage lagoon with aeration, settlement, and disinfection. Over the last few years, this particular lagoon system has been allowed to deteriorate. I have recently completed a regional wastewater treatment system where we replaced three lagoons, three treatment plants, and so I have some knowledge. To close that particular lagoon, without knowing the conditions of the sludge, it was approximately $450,000 to $600,000. To rehab the lagoon would be approximately $1.7 million, and to build a new treatment plant would be approximately $3.2 million. So it is no small undertaking to bring this treatment facility back up to today's current EPA discharge limits or to close that lagoon. The applying for a new MPDES permit for this lagoon would probably be in the neighborhood of about $40,000 adjusted engineering fees. So whatever is done on this particular site will require a major expenditure in funds. Be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Kate Thomas.
Hello, my name is Kate Thomas. I live at 1009 McAfee Court. I'm really hoping that you guys do approve this. The people that live there, I'm sorry, I've lived there for nine years, and it's slowly deteriorating. This has given us an opportunity to be able to afford something that not only can we actually live in, survive in, but pass down to our children. We have a chance to give them something. Most of the people that are paying there, that are living there now, are paying ridiculous for stuff that's not even worth it, when at the same time, this gentleman is offering us a chance to actually have something, stay where we have children that are growing up together with the people that we've had there, and give us an opportunity to actually afford something that wouldn't be paying rent somewhere, stuck somewhere where we're just living. This gives us a chance. This also gives our children a chance. This is redirecting the situations that we've been having to deal with, and he's willing to do this because he wants to see this improve. He's willing to offer affordable housing for not just us, but other people that can come here and see that all the stuff that we're saying that's affordable, it's not always how it says. You can't just go somewhere and say affordable housing and it be that. It's very difficult to find a place for you to move into when you have an elderly person, a couple that lives in a home with small children. It's difficult when you live paycheck to paycheck, you're on a budget. This gives us the opportunity to be able to take that money we have been spending on paying rent, and give us a chance to make a change, not only in our life for the better, but he's willing to change other people's lives for the better. He's willing to do this out of the kindness of his heart to make something better. So I'm hoping that you guys do approve this and give people the chance to see that we are trying to change here in Rock Hill. We have a lot of places in Rock Hill and York County that are terrible. They're awful. But this gives us a chance to actually show an improvement and do something to better our lives with this gentleman standing with us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate all the community that come out to speak at the public forum. And that concludes our public forum session. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Need to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. We move now to our public forum session, public hearing section. First item for public hearing, council hold a public hearing, consider amending and providing third reading to an ordinance to authorize the sale of 3,250 square foot, .07 acre more or less parcel of land located in Fort Mill identified by tax map number 72300044 with an address of 3643 Fills Way. To entertain an existing offer to purchase the parcel, to authorize the chairman to execute the contract of sale and deed, to abandon an adjacent easement, to reserve a new easement in favor of the county, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number two, council to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 31, County Policy, Section 31.01, Land Development Fee Schedule, to create fees for design exceptions to Land Development Manual, Sketch Plan Reviews, As-Built Drawing Reviews, and to revise signed production fees and improvement guarantee fund fees, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close. Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I know that this was brought up to the FNO. I wasn't at the meeting today, so I don't know if there's any kind of feedback to provide from that.
Yeah, we voted to, yeah, we voted to approve that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to old business. Item number one, council to consider second reading of an ordinance to adopt the five-year update to York IV, the York County Comprehensive Plan, including amendments to the future land use map, all plan elements and appendices pursuant to the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of 1994, to hold a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto.
I have a motion.
We have a motion.
We do have a motion.
Second.
We gotta wait for it.
Oh, motion to approve.
Thank you, Tom.
There you go.
There was a lot in that, y'all don't know.
There is.
Um, where did, did you, where is that, Jonathan? No, I mean, did you send that to me? I'm sorry, y'all. I don't see it. That's why I sent me. Okay. There we go. Motion to approve second reading with the following changes to the future land use map. And there's an exhibit, I don't know, do we have an exhibit or no? I think we know, we know, so we'll, okay. Number one, to change the area around Sharon to the agricultural future land use designation, to change the Dave's Road area to the agricultural future land use designation. Three, to change the Hall Spencer area west of US 21 to the rural residential future land use designation. And the following are depicted in Exhibit B, which we don't have to this motion, to change the St. Paul Church Road area to the agricultural future land use designation, to change the Ridge Road area to the agricultural future land use designation, and finally, to change the area bounded by Griggs Road, Highway 557, Param Road, Highway 55 to the agricultural future land use designation.
I believe the motion also would include a comment. Do you have that?
Sure, I'll go ahead and modify.
See if you agree with amendment on this.
Okay. I move that the transportation element of the plan be amended to further goal T-2, create a safe, comfortable, and connected bike and pedestrian network throughout York County by adding the following as implementation strategy, T-23D. Work with railroad operators to establish a rails-to-trails program to create new shared use paths on dormant rail lines to include creating a network connection between Rock Hill and York.
Do you agree to the amendment?
I agree to the amendment, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second with all of the amendments concluded together. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, real quick. In regards to that, the rail and the bike path, that is something also, too, that RFAS is currently working on, so that is incorporated in their future vision as far as how we address bike paths in the region. So I just want to share that with you. Okay? Thank you.
Any other discussion?
On the whole, over on the. Yes, Ms. Love. So the purpose of this, I think, its second reading is, I think a lot of us on council were surprised when we saw the proposed land use map, and, you know, I love dark green in my district, especially in western York County, and so do some of the other council members sitting up here. And that map was, there was a lot less dark green on the map, so what, what a couple of us have done, there will be, there will be more at third reading, but what a couple of us have done is worked with the planning and zoning department to kind of go backwards a little bit to, or maintain where we were before. So those agricultural properties are very important to us, and we just want to be sure that when our planning director comes before us at a rezoning or something, he's able to, you know, they have to, they have to follow the law, and they have to stick by whatever our ordinance says, whatever our zoning says. And so when, sometimes we find that they're supporting things that we as a council, or as partial council, sometimes may not support. And I just want, I just want for, for my district, and I feel like I speak for everybody here, they can certainly speak for themselves, but for District Two, I want to be comfortable in what he's going to stand up and support when somebody's looking for a rezoning. Those, less density is very important to most of us, so that's what that changes tonight. Those are specific areas that are still kind of larger, larger parcels, and we'll drill down a little more over the next couple of weeks and probably have some more changes when we come back at the next council meeting for reading three.
Any other discussion? I certainly will support second reading. I think we have our workshop, actually, our retreat that's coming up will give us an opportunity to have a little bit more discussion. Whenever you have as many as hundreds of people showing up to advocate for a change of the comprehensive plan, I think there's work that needs to be done. I think our council has made a first step in that tonight, but I expect that we'll see some additional changes before we have third reading. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We moved out to number two, which I understand is directly connected to item number three as well. These are kind of connected together. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 22-47, tax map number 446000065, a portion to rezone from GC to RMX 10.6 acres in District Three.
Motion to defer. Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer this item? Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins, you were the motion maker.
Richard contacted me, and he wanted to discuss a few things, and my constituents by overwhelming numbers disapprove of it, and management and staff does, too. And I'm not for high density either, but with what I'll And I'm not for high density either, but with what all he's went through, even though I know this is drug out long enough, for what he's spent and he's done, and also for the well-being of the people in there, I'm willing to listen to what he's got to say. And I just, one, I think that it's going to put a lot of stress on the schools and fires. And it doesn't meet our comprehensive plan. But I do owe him to at least listen to what he's got to say.
Any other discussion? Comments?
Uh, so what we're deferring is case number twenty-two forty-seven, twenty-two oh three, which is the areas out on Highway five that would provide him turn lanes. This would not be deferring unless we're going to do that too, the second reading on one hundred and fifty-five acres.
Yeah, I think the, the first item that's before us is the twenty-two forty-seven, but they are connected.
Yeah.
As the, the, the deferral has been requested on both.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that right?
I just want to give him the decency of understanding and seeing what he's brought to light. I know everybody here knows I'm not for high density. But I've gotten so many on both sides that have overwhelmed me with female. And it's my district and I deserve to at least give them that.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? I certainly agree with you, Mr. Atkins. I think that's, um, that makes sense to at least give the opportunity to see what else is available. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to number three, which again is connected to that one. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number twenty-two dash oh three, tax map number four-four-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-two, to rezone from RUD to RMX ten, one hundred and fifty-five acres in District Three.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Atkins?
I, I would recommend, though, I want this brought up on March sixth.
Yes, sir. It'll be deferred to, to the next council meeting.
Just don't drag out any longer.
Yes, sir. The, the motion will be noted such that it will appear on the very next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to number four, rezoning action, consider, uh, council to consider second reading, case number twenty-two dash forty-two, to rezone fifty-one parcels from various zoning districts to PR. To, these affect council districts two, three, four, five, and six. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? The only thing I'll say is that I would, I would ask that staff take a look at where, where are parks allowed by right? And if we don't have any designations that allow the parks to attend, to be there by right, I think we ought to take a look at that. That seems like one of the most innocuous uses you can have. And, uh, I'd certainly like to have that by right versus some of the other things we have by right. If we can take a look at that. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to number five, rezoning action, consider second reading, case number twenty-two dash forty-four, tax map number seven-one-nine-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-nine-nine, to rezone from Light Industrial to OI eighty-eight point three thirteen acres in District Seven. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to number six, rezoning action, consider second reading, twenty-two dash forty-eight, tax map number three-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four-six, to rezone from RSF forty to RUD, fifteen point fifteen acres in District Three.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
I would, um, I like the way that he reached out to the community and I think if we'd had more that would do that, things would go a lot better.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I would like to also mention that I do, that, that is excellent for what we saw from a first reading to second reading and having these conversations. And I, I think you, I set a great example for what can be accomplished between communities. So nice work.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion?
I'm just going to say, I'm, I'm going, I will not be voting in favor until I have a chance to review the deed restrictions.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? I will say this, I think at the last council meeting, there was a pretty strong directive asking Mr. Ratchford, as well as Mr. Becker and those folks in the community, to get together and see if you guys can come to an agreement. And if you can come to an agreement, then I think our council owes it to you to try and help you put together something that makes that happen, that satisfies the community and that operates to allow, um, the property be, to be used. I've seen a list of the conditions that they seem to make sense to me. If the property owner is prepared to do that as a deed restriction, then that certainly makes it a whole lot easier. And I just want to say thank you to the community for working, working through that together. And hopefully we will, we will get to third reading, um, in good fashion. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Hearing, we have five to one. Is that right? Yep. Math, as always. I didn't go to school for math. Um, item number seven, rezoning action, consider second reading, case number twenty-two dash forty-nine, tax map number three-eight-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-six, to rezone from AGC to RUD, thirty-eight point, one point one-two acre portion of a thirty-eight point fourteen acre parcel in District Two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to say one thing. If I could get more letters like I got from Ms. Pendleton today, it, it would be awesome. If we could all get letters like that, it would be awesome. Because this is someone who is simply carving out a small area for a family member to, to build on. But they, they have a, a working farm and are continuing to, to stay in that business. So that's, um, I read the letter and I didn't answer because I didn't, wasn't quite sure what to say yet, but I knew we were going to approve this tonight just based on what, what it was. But, um, I'll answer her letter tomorrow.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to number eight, rezoning action, consider second reading, case number twenty-two dash fifty, tax map number one-fifty-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-four-zero-one-five-zero-two-three, to rezone from AGC to RUD and RUD to AGC, five point three-three acre portion of a sixteen point one-four-nine acre parcel in District Three.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Um, I reached out to them and it's basically just clearing up some split zoning. I think they still all have the intentions of keeping it just clear, not split zoning.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to new business. Item number one, council to approve first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, the county, and a company identified for the time being as Project Mountie with respect to certain property, including without limitation, economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? No, second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have a new motion?
I make a motion, we defer this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for deferral. Any discussion?
To what time, Madam Chair?
Shall we defer it to the next council meeting?
Yes.
Next council meeting?
Yes.
All right.
Can I ask why we're deferring it?
Yep.
Haven't had a meeting to discuss it or?
Well, the motion maker, Debbie, do you want to speak or do the?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay. First of all, I have an, I have had insufficient time to look this project over. It is my district. And, uh, there is going to be a tremendous impact to the, uh, already congested area of twenty-one, plus two new schools are going to be their next-door neighbor. I do have, uh, concerns about environmental, uh, issues with manufacturing, rather than it just being a warehouse with small children next door. I would think you would have the same thing. And, uh, also, um, we just need to, um, check out the, even payroll. There, there seems to be a, a problem with, you know, how much these people are going to make. We're talking about low-income housing or affordable housing for seventeen dollars an hour for six-hundred-and-five people. I don't want those phone calls.
Thank you for explaining.
Does management have a position on this one? I know that council hasn't been briefed on, on this specific, is there a position on that one?
Yes, management supports it.
Supports this?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion from council on this item?
Yeah, so just to piggyback a little bit on what Debbie had talked about. You know, the, the, this facility, um, it, and it's interesting from, from the way the entrance is, is that you've got a facility that has one entrance in and one entrance out. There is, uh, already concern in that area with the amount of trucks that go into that location. And it actually is sharing, uh, an entrance road with other businesses in the back. So they all kind of filter onto one road where there's no release valve and there's no other options, um, to get off of the probably other than one entrance in, one entrance out. And it's, it's all being used by both vehicles and the tractor-trailer. So again, more discussion to come, but I just want to add that into, um, what Debbie has talked about.
Any other discussion?
I just, I just would like to say something that I, that's, that's somewhat bothered, bothered me for some time. And that is our Economic Development Committee meetings, um, over the past couple of years have been held before council meetings. And there are a lot of days that we, um, pack up, fold up, and rush down to a council meeting. And I don't, and I could be wrong. I have been. But I don't remember this coming up. I think I would have questioned that, um, the, the rate of pay at seventeen, seventeen dollars an hour is low for, you know, a fee in lieu. And, um, I, I just don't remember hearing about this, so I was a little surprised to see it myself. And, um, but one, one thing that's very important is, I'm, I'm still on that committee. We have a new chair, chairman on that committee. I want to be sure that when we meet, we, we hear and see everything. If that means that we have to meet during the week or a different time of day, um, it's, it's very important to, to me as a committee member, and I know to you, to, for us to get all this information. And then when we do get an update at council, I think the rest of council needs to get, get the rest of that information in that update. Because I don't, I don't like surprises. And I know that, you know, here we've got a, a company on here that management supports who, um, is probably wondering why we're deferring this tonight. And had we had a little time and note about this, I think we could have probably, um, already gotten some of the answers to our questions. And, um, so I'm, I'm certainly in, in favor of the deferral tonight.
I, I do have one more add-in comment that I meant to, meant to say, but I would like to go ahead and move our Economic Development Meeting to this upcoming Monday, if that's possible. Again, we can have further discussion, but I'd like to have a time to speak about this and to look into this. So we'll, prior to our next agenda coming up.
Any other discussion? I certainly don't have a problem with deferral. I think making sure that we, that we have, um, open lines of communication. I, I noted that this one in particular didn't have the resolution that comes before it. So technically, we could have approved first reading, uh, without having the, the obligation of the resolution. But I certainly understand the reasons for deferral and support that. All in favor of the deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Council to give authorization to apply for and to accept if awarded a South Carolina Coordinated Council Economic Development, set aside grant, C twenty-two dash thirty-seven eighteen for Project Mountie in the amount of two million dollars. No local match is required.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I would, yeah, motion to defer.
Motion to defer. It's connected to Mountie.
Because it's connected to the other one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion to defer.
There's a motion and a second to defer to the next council meeting, Mr., Mr. Hudson.
Yes, if, if I could, this, this is a pass-through grant that would be, um, there is a time-sensitive issue. And I don't know exactly what the date is, but that's why we put it on this council meeting. If the project is not supported by council, then there will be no grant, there'll be no application. So if, um, I could ask council to reconsider that and allow us to at least approve the grant to be submitted on behalf of the industry. It doesn't obligate us to anything. And, and as I said, the grant, if, if we don't go forward with the project, then the grant would not obviously be completed.
I think the timing, um, in our paperwork was like June twenty-first or June twenty-fourth for that grant. I'm just saying. But, uh, that, but it's fine. I agree. I'll let you go ahead.
Will you agree to withdrawal?
Yeah.
Of the deferral?
Yeah, a motion to withdraw, uh, defer.
Was that Debbie's motion? You guys both agree to withdraw? Okay.
I'll make a new motion to approve.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, if I could make one more comment. There is a mistake in the, or, uh, error. It's a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of investment. I think there was just a problem with the, the, um, with, we're missing a ze, a few zeros there. But if you look at the write-up for that, it's a hundred and fifty million dollar investment. That's consistent with what was in the one, the item before. It's just a typo.
Understood. So the new motion on, 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 on the table is to approve and to move, move ahead. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to committee and other reports. Finance and Operations Committee, which met today. Miss Love?
We met today at five o'clock and we met right up until this meeting. That was, um, Councilman Atkins and also Aldette. And we have some, um, recommended appointments for the planning commission would be Mike Dorelia for a second term, Jamie Cooper for the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board for a first term, Billy Hagner for a, um, second term, I'm sorry, yeah, for a, um, for a third term with York County Natural Gas Board. And I think I missed one. Ashley Hamilton for a first term with the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board. And, um, we also have, um, we approved Councilman Aldette's discretionary funds for, um, York County, and York County Access Bus for the Council on Aging, fostering the family, Fort Mill EMS, and Flint Hill Fire Department. We had discussions regarding the proposed human resource ordinance modification. And we have, um, um, we have, we recommend that. We had a lot of questions. We recommend that, um, at this point. Discussion regarding proposed land development fee schedule, we approved that and that was already approved in our, um, in our, um, former, um, vote tonight. And we had a finance update.
So real quick, though, it was, it was approved, but there was also, as part of it, uh, we would require a review of the, um, of how, how the review of the review process, in essence. So with that motion. So in essence, David would be showing us how he would be reviewing, um, the, the working from home.
Is that the HR policy you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes.
So it would be subject to council approval or?
Yeah, it would just be a review to understand how it's working.
Okay. Citizen Concerns, Dr. Martha Edwards and Dr. Katie Chambers to address council regarding funding for the local Department of Mental Health.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Dr. Chambers actually could not make it. She was out of town today. So, um, I came to talk to you today about mental health in York County. And in our community, I come offering three different perspectives. First, I currently serve as the Vice President of the South Carolina Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Second, I've been a local pediatrician in Rock Hill for the last twenty-five years. And third, I come as a mother of three children who grew up attending York County schools. So, next slide. The National Academy of, uh, National American Academy of Pediatrics, um, declared an emergency, a state of emergency for children's mental health last year. They partnered with the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry and the Children's Hospital Association in making that declaration. And they called upon policymakers to join them in taking action to help. Rates of childhood mental health concerns and suicide rose steadily between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty. And by two thousand and eighteen, suicide was the second-leading cause of death for youth ages ten to twenty-four. The pandemic has obviously intensified that crisis across the country. We've witnessed dramatic increases in emergency department visits for all mental health emergencies, including suspected suicide attempts. The number one cause of death in this country for children now is firearm injuries. And sometimes those are also associated with suicide attempts. So it's not infectious diseases, not car accidents, firearms, and then suicide. Next slide. South Carolina, uh, chapter has also echoed the declaration of the state of emergency for children's mental health. Next slide. So how can you help? Why am I here? As part of that declaration, policymakers are called upon to fully fund comprehensive, community-based systems- to fully fund comprehensive, community-based systems of care that connect families in need of behavioral health services and supports for their child with evidence-based interventions in the home, community, or school, and promote and pay for trauma-informed care services that support relational health and family resilience. Next slide. There are forty-six counties in South Carolina, and out of those forty-six, forty-two currently support their local Departments of Mental Health with financial support. Four counties in our state provide no support at all. Next slide. Here's a sample of what other counties give to support their local mental health departments. Based on these examples, one might expect that our county, York County, would budget about a hundred thousand dollars a year for its local Department of Mental Health. We're smaller than Charleston and Greenville, and bigger than Berkeley and Santee. But, next slide. York County currently budgets zero dollars in financial support for our Community Mental Health Center. Next slide. York County used to budget over ninety thousand dollars a year to support Catawba Community Mental Health in the early nineties. By 2014, that number had fallen to eighteen thousand dollars, and no money at all has been given for the last nine years. Catawba also supports Lancaster Counties and Chester. Chester gives three thousand dollars, gave that last year. Lancaster gives nothing. Next slide. As a pediatrician who's practiced in Rock Hill for twenty-five years, I've spent thirty years interacting with families in tiny exam rooms during their most wonderful, joyful times and during their most vulnerable, stressful times. I spent fifteen years volunteering my Fridays to see uninsured children in a local, school-affiliated pediatric clinic, where I was surprised to find that the most common referral to me was for mental health concerns. I've experienced twenty-five years of disappointment in our local mental health resources. I can't lie about that, and this does not include some amazing local counselors. Honestly, I don't think there's been a day that's gone by in the last twenty-five years when I haven't complained about our local mental health resources. Next slide. My mom always told me that you can be a part of the problem, or you can be a part of the solution. I suspect your mom's told you the same thing, which is why you're sitting up there today, and I thank you for that. Next slide. So in response to that voice in my head of my mom, I did a few things. I've served for three years on the Board of Catawba Mental Health. I integrated mental health prevention and intervention in my own practice, educated myself on how to do that, and I also have helped to educate my colleagues at Rock Hill Pediatrics to do the same. And as a result of that, next slide. Many of us have gotten quite good at these visits, but let me tell you, those are the hardest visit of our days. We generally have fifteen-minute slots for appointments, and we screen for depression in every single teen that we see. So for an example, I cared for a teen last week who came in with sore throat. Quick visit, right? Swab her for strep, strep is negative, talk about the symptoms, get her out. I looked down at her depression screen and noticed that it was very high. She spent every day thinking that she would be better off dead. And she also checked the box that said she'd had a previous suicide attempt. And so rather than leave that alone, because I think for many years of my practice, I was unaware of these situations. I got, I asked the mom to step out for a minute. We talked, and that child told me she didn't want to tell her mom she had told no one about this attempt, but she continued to think about doing it again every day. As you can imagine, that fifteen-minute visit became an hour pretty quickly, and my day was a rough day. And so that's just an example to kind of illustrate that when we're faced with more complicated issues involving mental health, my colleagues and I need a fully functioning mental health system in York County, in this community, to support our citizens and our families. Next slide. In case you're not aware, there is a relatively new Executive Director at Catawba Mental Health. Her name is Tamara Edrington. She has two master's degrees, one in counseling, and she serves as the Executive Director, and she's a Certified Practice Manager. She could work anywhere for a lot more money, but she stays here to support Catawba Mental Health. She does things like taking calls on Thanksgiving and Christmas this year for the Mobile Crisis Unit, because our legislature passed an act saying we had to have mobile crisis units, which I think is wonderful, and they're great. However, there's no money to staff the Mobile Crisis Unit or to pay people any overtime for working in that position, so she does it herself. There's also a new Medical Director, Dr. Katie Chambers. She is triple-boarded in psychiatry. That means she's boarded in pediatric, forensic, and adult psychiatry. She is a gift to our community. She could work anywhere, but she's passionate about helping serve this community and doing it well. Next slide. But without funding to support staff positions and good counselors, she really doesn't have people to make appointments, to follow up, to do paperwork, to do, you know, to fax things, to make sure that patients are getting connected to the resources they need to actually get better, right? Our Department of Mental Health is spending a significant portion of its budget simply to pay the rent for the buildings they use. For years, the starting salary across the state for master's-level counselors has been thirty-five thousand dollars. They recently got a little bump of fifteen percent, but still, that's about forty-two thousand dollars a year for a master's-level counselor. People that live in York County and are counselors realize pretty darn quickly, usually after just a few months, that they can travel up the road twenty minutes and make twice as much in North Carolina, or go into private practice and serve a much less challenging population and make more money. Next slide. So finally, I wanted to speak with you as a mother of three children who grew up here. My children all had friends who had struggles with anxiety, depression, and experienced often very difficult challenges in their own families. They desperately needed a functioning local Department of Mental Health to help get them through some tough middle and high school years. They really didn't have one, so their families, I, their support teams, my partners patched together counselors and doctors, usually somewhere out of York County, to help them through. Next slide. We need all hands on deck. We need to do everything we can to empower our local Department of Mental Health to provide the services that they are tasked often by law with providing, and that they could do well if they had more funding, starting with helping them simply pay the rent on the buildings that house our services. Next slide. So I'm here to ask that you consider this as you're deliberating about the budget for this year. There is no health, I'm here to tell you, without mental health. COVID and social media have posed huge challenges to children in the last few years, and this was on top of a crisis that was already unfolding. This is not new. So please choose to be a part of the solution. I think it said that budgets reflect our priorities, and if that's true, that makes me angry, it makes me sad for York County that our budget does not reflect that mental health is a priority for our children and the families that are trying to raise them. So preferably, you know, fund the amount of money that they ask for, and Tamara, I think, is going to try and speak with you in the future at funding meetings, but I wanted to put this on your radar early so that you can be thinking of this. It's a national problem. It is a local problem. It has been for a long time, and we can't expect them to do a great job without the resources to do a great job. Thank you for listening. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Chair.
Mr. Atkins?
I have the right to ask management a question.
Sure, you have a question for management?
Yeah, back in the, and y'all correct me, I mean, I don't know, but in the consent agenda, we had the issue with Keystone Substance Abuse. Would the mental health qualify for any of that money too?
I had sent an email later today, and I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to see.
I got in late.
That's fine. And I may hand this over to Trish, but generally speaking, there's very narrowly-defined criteria for how we can spend the money that you're talking about. And we had, Keystone is the agency, and they qualify because they run those programs, and that is what council chose to allocate the money for. There were some additional funds available, more than what we anticipated, so the item you approved tonight was to also give that additional money to Keystone. It may be that this would qualify, but we would need to vet that and work with the Catawba Mental Health to see if they could qualify for the money or what the programming they would do would qualify for that. Again, it's pretty hard to qualify, but they may, and we will have future opportunities with that money. There will be more money in the future. So we recommended, and you approved tonight, that that money be allocated as we had requested, but when additional money becomes available, we can evaluate whether or not it would qualify for this, and we can work with Catawba Mental Health to get it qualified, then it would be up to council to make a determination as who you wanted to fund.
Right, but they kind of just, you know, run kind of hand in hand.
Yeah, there's some, again, it's, it's, it has to be programming that they haven't done before, and they have to be able to demonstrate that it's related to drug dependency and all that sort of thing, but Trish, did I miss anything?
No, sir. With the opioid settlement money that council approved in the consent agenda tonight, when it comes to mental health, it has to be mental health co-occurring with substance use disorder, and.
Isn't that frequent? Isn't that frequent?
I'm sorry?
Isn't the opioid abuse connected to a mental health issue? Isn't that, I guess the question that I heard Mr. Atkins asking is, does it even qualify? Does what was put in the consent agenda, is that something that would, could they apply for those funds?
What they could do is go on to SCORF, S-C-O-R-F dot com, and that is the Opioid Recovery Fund Board that is overseeing the opioid settlement agreement. And on there, they have their core strategies and the abatement strategies that any entity that wants to apply for this money has to have some kind of program in there, and they do a great job on that website laying out what is eligible for the money and what's not eligible. And on there, they underline within the eligibility's the co-occurrence of mental health and substance use disorder, and how you can use those funds for those co-occurring items. So there's a lot of information on there, on the website, about what's eligible and what's not eligible with mental health and co-occurring with substance abuse disorder.
I guess just to follow through with that thought, is, does our action tonight in approving the consent agenda item, does that then limit Catawba Mental Health from determining whether or not they can qualify to apply for those funds? Or does our approval of the consent completely differ from you qualifying and dedicating those funds?
So what you approved tonight is SCORF opened up another opening window, if you will, for money that had come in that, so that closes on the twenty-eighth of February. And so what you approved tonight was for Keystone to go and get that money that the county had. We were told by the president, or who's overseeing the SCORF for the state, that they weren't sure they were going to open it up again this year, but the board decided to open it up again one more time. However, there is money from settlements that's coming in on a fluent basis, if you will. So there will be another time to go and get money. As the settlements come in, more money goes in there for York County. So they can come back. If Catawba goes and looks on the website and said, you know what, we meet this criteria, they could notify management, get my card, notify me, and then when SCORF opens the window again to go get money, then we could bring that before council if there is an eligible program that they would like to apply for those funds.
Thank you, Trish. I think with the deadline, it sounds like that that's been done, but Dr. Edwards, I would certainly encourage you to reach out to Tamara and let her know about the availability of these funds. I mean, one hundred and eighty-seven beds, which was cut in half for an entire state of five million people for Catawba, that's woefully inadequate. It's a state issue. I mean, there's, but I do think that it's an important message that we receive from you, and I hope that you'll translate that message back to Ms. Edrington so that she can look to see if there's application for those future funds and corona funds as well. We do have another citizen concern in front of us. Alicia Ballant to address council regarding the pollen count in our community.
Hi, my name is Alicia Ballant. I am just really a college student in chemistry, but I also have horrible seasonal allergies. And I've learned through understanding science more that we can actually change our pollen count. We can change our environment. Right now, we have moderate pollen today. But the thing is, we can plant, let's say, our grass. There are many different species of grass we can use. Most common is either cenipede or Bermuda. But if you rate those, those are either tens or nines. Those produce a lot of pollen. But if you change it to, let's say, tall frescoes, you can completely almost eliminate grass pollen, which means for the twenty-five percent of people who suffer from seasonal allergies, that could largely improve someone's quality of life. And as a county and as a government, our local cities and towns, we maintain a lot of lawns, and if we can change the plants we plant, we can literally eliminate bad pollen. It would take, this would take many years. Let's say we're placing trees like cypress. You can throw a rock at a cypress tree, and you'll see a huge cloud of pollen come out. But if you take, right, but you can also look at spruce. In comparison, spruce produces almost no pollen that we actually react to. If you replace those cypress trees with spruce, you eliminate a lot of tree allergies. And we, as a community, let me pull to the page. We can change the landscape of our schools. So right now, we have a lot of protections for kids with peanut allergies, but only one in fifty kids have peanut allergies. But we don't have protections from seasonal allergies or those with asthma. Now, understand that most of the pollen from a tree lands a hundred feet from that tree. So if a kid is in a school with a cypress tree outside the door, or Bermuda grass, they're going to feel horrible. They're going to do badly in school. Maybe they'll have a horrible asthma attack. And one in twelve kids have asthma. And one in five kids have seasonal allergies. Now, if we change the plants we have on our schools, maybe they'll feel better. Maybe they can be outside longer without feeling horrible. And I also feel like we can add, we need to, I don't know a lot about the jurisdictions. This might involve working with a lot of different levels of governments, because we're not an island, we're not isolated. I go to Charlotte, I go to all the different areas, and if we pool our resources, we can definitely do a lot more to change our landscape. But we can make, give people incentives, tax incentives, or tax deductions for placing high allergy trees or high allergy lawns. Now, I don't know if we have the jurisdiction for some of that, or maybe lower the taxes on low allergy grass species, maybe raise the taxes on high allergy ones. Now, maybe in twenty years, your house value might be increased if you have low allergy plants around your house. Maybe, just like you do a house inspection or a well inspection, maybe you'll do a plat inspection, because if you're living there, you are definitely going to be affected by the plants around you. Maybe parks and amusement parks will advertise low allergy. I think this is something we don't think of. I think this is something we don't think about. I recommend looking at this book, Algae-Free Garden, which goes through a lot of different species of plants that I did not realize until I looked through it. And it's kind of alarming how, wait, I should explain why we're doing, have high allergy? So landscape companies are planting male trees, because they don't produce litter, they don't produce fruit that fall for us to sweep. But they produce pollen, so we're trading our physical health for no litter. And by choosing all female plants, we can actually do an allergy-free garden. And I'm new to government policy, there's probably a lot more ways we can change our environment to better people's health. And this is new to me, and I definitely, this will take a long time to implement, but it's something that I want to figure out how to do. Thank you.
That concludes our citizen concerns portion of the agenda. We now move to council member, new non-agenda comments. Do we have any comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Aldit?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I just want to go ahead and recommend that we put the Catawba Mental Health on, opportunity to help them on our budget for discussion during our budget session, so again, want to make sure to recommend that. The next thing is that last week, I went to the annual Keystone meeting, which we did speak about Keystone a little earlier. It was a, a pretty eye-opening meeting, you know, as they looked at the impact of opioids in our area, and the impact of fentanyl in that area, you know, in, in the last two years, overdoses in York County have doubled in the last two years. Very alarming numbers, very, very alarming numbers. One of the things they did share, though, is that they are having good success with the Narcan shots, okay? Dorn and overdose that has actually saved multiple lives. So I think as we look at funding and as we look at how we can support, those Narcan shots have been critical, critical during overdoses. Again, want to share that with y'all. The last thing I want to share with y'all is that in the last several months, I've seen, what I see very alarming is coming and going into our libraries. And what I'm, what I'm addressing here is the concern that we've seen with, what we see is the identity movement on our youth in the book content in our libraries. It's been extremely, extremely alarming to me. We see books that are starting at age four, where they're coming from the American Library Association, and they are pushing them out by the dozens. There were probably multiple dozens of books in the York County Library that support this, but there was absolutely zero that were speaking of the damaging impact of this gender identity movement on youth, on kids. So we had, we have gotten 11 books in there to do speak of the damaging impact on this gender identity on the youth. But I'm, I'm making the public aware of this, because I want to alert parents that what we're seeing coming from the American Library Association on this gender identity is they are pushing these books out immensely into the library, starting at the age of, what we see in a four. And again, again, this is an awareness, but I want to share this as a public awareness. And again, that's coming from American Library Association.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? We don't have bump here tonight, kicking us off. I will just note that we do have our council retreat coming up this weekend. I know that JPS and Planning and Zoning and Health and Human Services have some items on there, task to, to move forward with their committee assignments, and I'm not aware of anything else that management has requested to be referred out, so do we have a motion for, Ms. Love?
So, something that's a big complaint in my district, and maybe it's just because we have all the largely dense neighborhoods, but I'm just curious to know if, if they're, and I, I don't know what, what committee would discuss this, but if there's something that we can do to limit the solicitation, we have, we have people who are getting knocks on their doors at, at 10:00 PM, and it's, there's just rampant solicitation, and I know it's because we're in Easy Market, it's kind of like trick-or-treat, you want to go to the big neighborhoods when, when they're giving out candy, and, and so I, I just, I'm just curious to know which committee that would be, if that's, if that's something that we can do. And then I still am waiting for an answer on what I brought up last time, which committee would see the issue with the nuisance dogs that are barking incessantly, so.
I think the nuisance dogs would necessarily be something that would go to Public Works. I think we should wait till bump gets back before we refer that to him when it comes to...
I think it might be an enforcement thing, though. I think it might be just the public.
We could probably discuss that at our, our retreat and identify where, where the, I know that there was also a request to have the recreation funding reviewed, which was typically been referred to Health and Human Services, so that's probably something that we'll have to take a look at. We'll, why don't we discuss that at our retreat, and we'll figure out the best committees to refer the ones that the majority of council wants to do, since we have that meeting coming up. Any other comments, non-agenda comments? Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yeah, motion for executive session, receipt of legal advice litigation update.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are out of executive session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Well, I do have one motion coming out of executive session for authorize council to proceed with the letter as discussed in executive session.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.